Good evening, everyone. The time is now 5:35 and I would like to call this meeting to order. The November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two Academic Achievement Committee meeting. I am Dr. Zippur Miller, Chair of the Committee and the District Five Representative for Prince George's County Board of Education. If everyone could please introduce themselves, starting with the board members who are on the committee, and then the guest board members, if we have any present, and then the Prince George's County Public Schools Administration and staff, and then the board office staff.
I am Curtis Valentine, At-Lark Member of Board of Education and Committee Member.
Hello, everyone. Albert Serran Reece, student member of the board and committee member.
Good evening. I am Judith White, Chief Academic Officer.
Good evening. I'm Kia McDaniel, Director of Curriculum and Instruction.
Good evening. I'm Jamie Bowers. I am the Director of Testing, Research, and Evaluation.
Good evening. Dr. Stephanie McLeod, High School Mathematics Instructional Supervisor.
Good evening. Anthony Whittington, Director of Monitoring and Accountability.
Good afternoon, Michelle. Good evening. Dr. Michelle Dyson, Middle School Mathematics.
Good evening. I'm Janita Nelson-Generet, Elementary Mathematics Instructional Supervisor.
I am Annie Sellis, Administrator Secretary, Board Office.
Joe Day Newsome, Board Office Director.
Thank you, everyone, for being here. Mrs. Ellis, could you please call the role?
Yes, Dr. Zippur Miller.
Present.
Mr. Serone Ruiz.
Here.
Mr. Valentine.
Here.
And we have board members Adam Stafford and board members Thomas absent. So, but we do have a quorum with three.
Thank you so much. So may I have a motion to adopt the November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The agenda is adopted. May I have a motion to approve the October seventeenth, twenty twenty-two meeting minutes?
They're moved.
Again.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The agenda is adopted. So for public comment, we do have one registered speaker. The registered speaker is Bianca Bullock, who is an individual speaking regarding teacher communication and efforts to assist struggling students. Is Ms. Bianca Bullock available?
I don't see her in the queue.
Okay.
I don't see her in the queue.
All right. So then let us just move on to three point oh. If she comes, we can add her after the presentations and the questions. But at this time, we'll move on to discussion item three point oh. So Dr. White, I will now yield the floor to you and your team to present this evening's agenda items. Mathematics, curriculum learner experience, alignment to county and state assessments, and core content pass rates for mathematics and science by race and special education. Dr. White?
Good evening. It's a pleasure seeing you all this evening. I come in collaboration with the Chief of Accountability Doug Strater, who is not with us this evening, but his team is joining us. So first, I will have the mathematics team, a rock star group of supervisors who actually oversee elementary, middle, and math, taking you through the lens of mathematics and just what we do to prepare students and our teachers throughout the year. So they will start followed by Jamie and Anthony talking about grades as it relates to mathematics and science. And so I yield the floor to Dr. McDaniel, who will start with her team. And Dr. McDaniel, I don't know if you or Anise is sharing the presentation.
One of the math team members will be sharing the presentation, I believe. Yes, Stephanie's going to be sharing the presentation. So as she's pulling that up, thank you for having us here this evening. We are excited to share with you a little bit about our curriculum, how it's laid out, how it's aligned to standards, and how we measure assessment across each of the levels, elementary, middle, and high. So I will turn it over to you, Stephanie.
Thank you, Dr. McDaniel. I am sharing. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
All right. And this is the front matter. And I wanted to start by, um, thank you for allowing us this opportunity to share K-12 mathematics with you. We want to start by taking a look at our vision and mission. As you can see, the mathematics department vision is aligned to the strategic and instructional frameworks for the county. Our mission is to create a culture whereby students are empowered and engaged through learning experiences that help them to become lifelong learners and global citizens. I would like to direct your attention to the graphic in the middle of the screen. The graphic outlines curriculum, instruction, and assessment, which is the structure that drives our daily work from K-12 mathematics. The diagram, as you can see, the top curriculum, which is the foundation of what we do and who we are. It represents our educational goals for the students. At the heart of this is the goal that teachers provide high-quality instruction. And the assessment inform our success towards achieving those goals of the curriculum. So it is a cycle. We make sure that the curriculum and instruction, those pieces are aligned so that the teachers are able to deliver those goals to the students and move them through the assessments or help them to inform how successful they are at achieving our systemic goals for mathematics. Oops, sorry.
Good evening again. I'm going to share some information about the MCAP assessment. So as a department, we keep the end in mind. And our department supports students with becoming college and career-ready by showing proficiency with the MCAP assessments for grades three through twelve. The MCAP assessment assesses the Maryland College and Career Ready Standards, which defines the knowledge and skills that all students should master by the end of each course or grade level. And these grade-level standards, course standards, also keeping the end in mind of having our students leave PGCPs, college, and career-ready. The image on the left-hand corner, the bottom corner, that just represents the domains and the progressions of learning from K to twelve. And I really want to spend a little bit of time about the breakdown of the MCAP assessment. The pie chart, our pie diagram, shows approximate percentages of items on the test. So about fifty-one percent assesses content or type-one items. And those items also address reasoning and modeling. And these items are the machine-scoreable types of items with either the multiple choice, the multiple select, fill-in-the-blank. That represents fifty-one percent of the assessment. About twenty-four percent of the assessment are the reasoning or the type-two items. And this assesses the grade-level appropriate reasoning of grade-level appropriate content. And then the other twenty-four, about twenty-four percent of the assessment are the modeling items, the type-three items, which assesses the modeling process. So whether or not students can apply mathematics to real-world situations, apply that grade-level content to solve real-world problems. Those percentages are approximate. Each grade level is broken down. Grades three through four, twenty-three points are for content. Ten points are the reasoning items, and ten points assesses the reasoning. I'm sorry, modeling, ten points, reasoning, ten points. Grades five through eight, twenty-three points are for content. Eleven points are for modeling, and eleven points for reasoning. And then when we assess high school content, twenty-four percent, twenty-four points represent content. Twelve points modeling, and twelve points reasoning.
Okay, so how do we ensure that we, that our work aligns with the expectation of college and career-ready assessment, the MCAP? So what we've created is a K-12 mathematics assessment system. And as you look at this visual here, I want you to look at it through two lenses. I want you to look at through the lenses at the base of the triangle, which represents the frequency of administration. And then how does it increase in the scope of expectations in the work? So as you can see with this triangle, the majority of the time, our teachers spend in formative assessments. And what formative assessments provide is teachers and students are provided with some feedback that helps them with their, to be able to make ongoing teaching and instructional decisions. So some examples of the formative assessment, you'll see we have readiness assessments that are provided to students before they start a new unit of study. And from that readiness assessments, teachers make instructional decisions to ensure we are filling gaps as students are learning grade-level material. We have assessment questions that align with what Janita just shared in regards to our type-one, type-two, type-three items, formative checkpoints, performance tasks, and practice problems. But as we continue to go up the triangle, you notice we have our interim assessments. So interim assessments allow administrators and district leaders to enter into this work. So we get to see how are students progressing with those particular sta-standards. So we have our common assessments, which are administered at the end of a scope of work within a unit. We have our student self-assessments and then our quarterly benchmarks. And these assessments here during an interim piece provides us from the district level some insight as well into how students, teachers, and students are growing with this work. And then as we move up, our ultimate goal is what we learn from formative interim is that we are preparing our students for MCAP, final exams, and end-of-the-year assessments. But there are four questions at the bottom that this assessment system helps answer those questions, like what do students already know? What sense are students making of what they are learning? How can students apply what they've learned so far to new situations? And did students learn what we expected of them from this unit, from this, oh, from the entire scope of the workday course at the end? So the next three slides, we just want to take you through each one of those areas. What does it look like for our formative assessment? So let's look at some items that represent reasoning, the content, and the modeling.
So for elementary, I'm gonna walk you through the formative, interim, and summative items through the lens of reasoning. And reasoning is when the student expresses grade-level, grade or course-level appropriate mathematical reasoning to grade-level content. So we're going to begin with our formative assessment item. This is an item from our curriculum, our grade-five milestone task. And in this item, students are being asked to look at an error that a student made with the area model. They had to identify the error. They had to explain how they would correct the error and then ultimately come up with the correct area, I'm sorry, the correct solution for the area model. And this again is that formative assessment item. And back to what Michelle presented earlier with those frequency administrations. We have more formative items happening throughout the year to collect that evidence of what students know and are able to do. Then if we take a look at a sample grade-five benchmark reasoning item, this item as well is asking students to look for an error that a student made. So they're asking for Kai made an error when multiplying seventy-two and five tenths times a hundred. So the student is asked to identify the error, support, and explain what the error is, and then what he can do to correct that error. So again, that alignment from what happened with those formative assessments, taking a look at the interim assessment with this benchmark item, and then a summative assessment item from a sample grade-five MCAP item, again, reasoning. The students are presented with two division equations. And there is a claim made by the student, and the student is asked whether or not that claim is correct. And then they have to use, they have to explain if it's correct, how it's correct, if it's incorrect, what the mistake is, and how that mistake can be corrected. So again, through the lens of reasoning, we start off with those formative assessment items that happen more frequently, the base of that triangle. Then we move to the interim assessment, again, assessing that type-two item, the reasoning, and then what it looks like when we see it on the summative assessment, grade-five MCAP. We're gonna move on next to middle school.
Okay, so remember, content makes up the largest portion of the three areas. And with content is those problems that students answer that's related to content at their particular grade level. Intentionality is the work of the K-12 team. And one of the things we want to ensure is that our students are having as many experiences with the types of questions that they're going to be asked on MCAP. So as you take a look at an example of a grade-eight common assessment, you can look at this problem type that students are being asked to solve. And with the content, which is different from the reasoning, students do not do any writing. And with our content, students just get right to the content. There can be some reasoning and some modeling happening in the content, but students just answer those content questions that are usually in a format of multiple select, the multiple choice, fill-in-the-blank, drag and drop. So it's so important that we give our students experiences through our assessment system in preparation for MCAP. So if you look at the grade-eight common assessment, which represents a part of our formative, then we move to our benchmark question, and you can see the, how they align. And then from there, there's an example of an MCAP assessment question that still assess the same content. So by the time students get to MCAP, they would have had experiences with those types of questions. For our benchmark assessments, that they usually average about, for secondary, they average about twelve questions. Of the twelve questions, ten of them fall in the area of content.
For high school, I want to address, first of all, the misconception between modeling and mathematical models. A lot of times when we say models or modeling in mathematics, it is the belief that it is a graph or a table. But modeling specifically speaks to a process by which students use to solve a problem. Those stages in the modeling cycle would begin with formulating, where a student would make an assumption or define variables. Computing it is where they would perform certain procedures, interpreting their results, which would relate the results or compute to the real-world situation that's being asked of them, and then to validate that by testing the reasonableness of their answers. So that is different than models. What you see here are three problems from high school, which specifically algebra one, which address the same standard. All of the modeling assessments require students to implore one or more steps of the modeling cycle. So I'm either going to formulate, compute, interpret, or validate when I am going through the modeling process. And then I'm connecting that knowledge and skills and content and my ability to describe the content based on the evidence statement. So students must provide evidence of their ability to use the modeling cycle by responding to a one-point machine-scored item and/or four-point items that require communicating in a written response. So that is the modeling cycle. As in middle school, the average benchmark assessment has about twelve questions on it, and one would be a model, modeling, a question that will require modeling.
Okay, so the next slide, we want to take a, take a look at how does our curriculum support those types of assessments, different assessment formats or expectations for assessments for our students. So each of us, K through twelve, we have two documents that teachers use. One is our CFPG, which provides teachers, it builds their knowledge of understanding the standards, what it is students need to know and be able to do. And then we all have something that aligns to an instructional guidance document, which provides teachers with access to various lessons, and it provides teachers with that, with pacing to help them stay on track with what they need, those standards that they need to teach. Each one of our K-12 instructional guidance documents include lesson seeds. Right? The lesson seeds provide teachers with a structure that ensures that if, when they follow those lesson seeds, we ensure that we put strategies in there to support all of our learners. So you will see strategies to reach our ESOL population, to reach our special education population, and then strategies for our students who are excelling. So the lesson seeds are just that, they are seeds. We don't create lessons to meet the needs of every individual student. Teachers take these seeds, and they take, they take the seeds and bring in the knowledge of their students to make adjustments to those lesson seeds that's unique to their particular classroom. Stephanie, click for me. This one. There you go. That was our lesson seeds. Click again. This is our rich task. And with the rich task, the rich task, the state provided us with same task. And those are formative assessment tasks that we provide teachers to provide students access with. And with those rich tasks, it gives students access to real-world problems or real-world scenarios that takes students through all of the areas where they have to reason and think through the mathematics. They have to use some type of problem-solving strategy and models to help them get through the mathematics. And then it's also, they are usually implemented in some type of collaborative work session when students engage in those rich tasks. And from there, we have our instruction. This is just an example of an instructional guidance document. And as you see on that document there, we also provide teachers checkpoints for them to, now, now that you've taught this, now that you have your common assessment data, let's look at that data and make some instructional decisions about the work. And that's where you see the data drip, practice data. You click again, Steph. This is the tool that we help teachers use, which is what we, our four R's. So when they looking at their, whether it's over a series of lessons or from their common assessment or benchmark data, they take what they've discovered about that data, and then they determine whether or not they need to revise that particular content standard, if they need to revisit, review, or reteach a particular standard. So this is embedded in all of our curriculum materials that teachers are provided with. Okay, okay. So with that, with the resources, the materials that we, let me go. I'll keep going. So with, not only with the curriculum that we provide teachers, we, it is, it is a district-created curriculum that is research-based and evidence-based strategies that are embedded in our curriculum document. But we also have instructional materials that we use to support that work. As you, if you look at here, we look at for an instructional resource, a K-five, they have the Dreambox Learning resource that supports that curriculum work. And then they have a supplemental resource, which is their Envision program as well. As you look in the middle where you see the rating, although this program may not meet the expectation, expectation of ESSA, it is our ultimate goal to ensure that we fill those holes and gaps. So where that material doesn't meet expectation, we provide them those rich lessons to help support, bridge, to bridge those gaps for that particular resource.
Thank you, Dr. Dyson.
No problem. Did I miss something?
Okay, go back. Yeah, I just wanted to make one statement. I had some technical difficulties in this. Oh, I just wanted to point out that we are currently going through a textbook adoption to have a resource that aligns to our core curriculum that will meet the rating for ed reports or ESSA. But like Michelle said, our core curriculum is where you get those rich tasks, where the students have those opportunities to engage in discourse, those literacy strategies. So although we do have supplemental resources and texts, we do push for that authentic math environment where students are collaborating. They're using literacy strategies. It's not about answer-getting. It's about that process of coming to conclusions and critiquing the reasoning of others in those math practices that are also part of the Maryland College and Career Ready Standards.
And Janita, before you move on to Michelle, I just wanted to point out here for our board members, oftentimes when we're in meetings, you may have a board member ask about ed reports. And when we do textbook adoptions, oftentimes we'll do a textbook adoption, and it could be a year later after a textbook adoption. And you think about mathematics, it's a core curriculum. Like, we go into a textbook adoption, easily could spend six million dollars, and all of a sudden, the state, the country standard, everything changes. And so we may not be able to go into adoption right away. And thus, our team is always vigilantly looking for materials, supplemental resources. So when you see sometimes, they may ask me, well, that doesn't align to ed reports. We identify that first before anyone else, and so therefore, they put other things in place. So you may hear them say Envision two point oh. That's really not her core. It's something that a parent may have at home if their child is looking up something in particular to use. We don't take it away because at the end of the day, their parents like us, oh, and it's called learn math a certain way. You'll hear parents say that, like, I don't understand how they're teaching it. So it's always good for them to just have a resource. But we make sure that the teachers have what they need to align to the state standard. So I just don't want you to be disenchanted if we're in a board meeting and you say, here, someone may make that statement because we planned for that in advance. And I'm excited about the work that Janita has specifically done. And I really just wanted to make sure that you all understood that that's not our core textbook.
Great. And for middle school, again, just like we share with our teachers, textbooks do not drive our instructional program. They're just a support material, a resource that's used by parents to look for examples, to support their children, and as well as for students to use those online platforms, whether it's using manipulatives or using applets on that particular program. So in middle, in middle school, our core text is the big ideas, math, modeling, real life. And again, this one partially meets expectation. And when you dig a little deeper into what it means to partially meet, it could be something so simple, as when they went through the report, they did not identify standards for mathematical practices were not intentionally written out for teachers, but they were placed in the curriculum in student-friendly language. But to address that, we made sure that we created, we use open-up resource materials which meets all expectations. I believe that resource has a perfect score in all three areas, but we use that resource to support teaching and learning. And then two additional supplemental resources we use in middle school math is Speak Agent, which is a resource that's used to build students' academic language. Because in order for students to be able to reason mathematically and model, they have to be able to use the academic language appropriately. And then we have Mobius Mathematics, which is used to build students' conceptual understanding and fluency in mathematics. And then our next area is high school. Steph, did you want me? Okay.
So for high school mathematics, and I want to apologize for the mouse. My mouse is real sensitive. So every time I touch it, those slides kept flying. So I want to apologize if that was confusing and/or distracting to anyone. Our core text is Envision. We provide supplemental Uh our cortex is envisioned. Uh we provide supplemental resources through Carnegie Learning as well as open up resources. But as Dr. Dyson and um Ms. Generec Nelson, Ms. Nelson Generec have stated, the core of our instructional program is our curriculum document. And uh for high school math, uh we were vetted in twenty nineteen and receive, we received a score of three point seven five out of four. We were four, had fours in uh three of the four categories and three in one. So in order to ensure that we are providing those other wraparound supports for students, especially those students as Dr. White said, when they are home and they need additional learning tools, we have the text, which is envisioned, the Carnegie Learning Support, as well as the open up researchers, sources for teachers and students.
So for our instructional materials, again, equity and access is a key feature in each of our documents. And so our, our documents include evidence based strategies for all of our learners. As Dr. White said, our core is our curriculum documents. These documents drive instruction across K twelve. And so on this slide, we have some um features in each of our documents, which include instructional considerations for our special education learners. In each of our documents, teachers have access to this into the different supports that provide those just in time supports and scaffolds for special education learners. We also include supports and evidence based strategies for our ESOL students, our English language learners. Our curriculum also provides um opportunities, enrichment opportunities for our highly able math students. And then for all students, each of our documents includes literacy strategies that that increases that reasoning piece that we want all of our students to have in those mathematics classes. Reason and make sense of mathematics, not just get to the correct answer or follow us, uh list the steps for algorithms. It's really about being able to read, being able to write in mathematics, have that discourse, those collaborative conversations. And then we talked about that modeling process and being able to use mathematics to apply to different real world situations. So each of our um documents has these features to address all of our learners, to ensure that everyone has access to grade level content and their needs are met.
We want our, we want to value our student thinking over answer seeking. So how can we creatively collaborate, collaborate, critically think and communicate? What models can I use to support my thinking? How am I engaged and where do I have my student voice? Um how am I able to show relevancy and authenticity? And that is through productive struggle. We want our students to be able to engage in the mathematics without necessarily worrying about is my answer right? What is my process? What is the process by which I am doing this thinking? What is my um problem solving strategy? What part of the modeling cycle am I using? So we are focused on effective teaching of mathematics that provides both opportunities for students to engage in productive struggle. And then when those students are engaged in that productive struggle, that they have opportunities to delve more deeply, which has longer term benefits for them owning the mathematics. So that when I walk away, I can apply this same mathematics to a different situation without necessarily feel like, oh, my answer was wrong, but my process was correct. And if you are familiar enough with rubrics for impact, uh for MCAT, students are given points for their reasoning. Regardless, sometimes a number may be wrong in their arithmetic or their mathematics may be a little bit off. But if their reasoning is correct, our students still get points for that. And that is the hugest part of the process because we are building thinkers, not just people that are getting right answers all the time. Then Michelle or Janita, would you like to add to that? I think that brings us to the end of our presentation. Our contact information is here. Again, we want to thank you for the time and the opportunity to present to you. And I guess at this time, we will take any questions.
I think you may need to unmute.
Well, I do. I was looking for I didn't want to overstep. Okay, uh but since you've invited me, my question is when a teacher has a classroom of pupils, let's say twenty five students. And let's say they're all at a different level in math. And let's say all that you've shared with us, and I didn't see the whole presentation, so I'll have to go back and look at some of it. How does a teacher manage that? Giving, let's say it's broken down into a third of each for ESOL special need. And those students that are super bright and can really comprehend. How does a teacher manage that? Or what tools do you provide the teacher to help manage that?
I'll just start with what's in our curriculum framework progress guides and our instructional guidance documents. Are those um strategies? They're the instructional considerations for teachers to think about when you're addressing those different needs in the classroom. And then what we're working with our schools and our math leaders is ensuring that the teachers do have that time and space to plan for that. As um Dr. Dyson mentioned earlier, we have lesson seeds, but the intent was never just to go through that lesson seed and just read through it. Teacher still needs a plan and that lesson seed, like I said, includes those strategies and those best practices for those different learners. But teachers still need to come together and plan that lesson to really ensure that they're meeting the needs of those students, those diverse learners in their classrooms. So we have those strategies, but schools and our math leaders and our administrators set that time for teachers to plan and make sure that those strategies are implemented.
And I just want to add, can I add one more thing in addition to that? Because you can have the best laid plan that provided for teachers, but one of the things we also know we have to do is offer them some type of professional development on how to do it. So for example, or graphic organizers is a part of our instructional tools and, and that teachers can use. So right now, middle school teachers are in a training session this evening on how to use graphic organizers to bring to help uplift that mathematics. So we do provide that. And if they cannot attend, some of the trainers, we ensure we record and then we place them in uh on our platform for teachers to access them on their own time. But the professional development is critical because professional development curriculum documents work hand in hand.
I appreciate the addition of. Go ahead, if you want to add something.
I just wanted to add to what Dr. Dyson is saying. In that professional development, we also show teachers how to scaffold that lesson so that the students, what, no matter what your entry point is, you walk away with the same level of learning. So I'm, it's not being dumbed down, so to speak. So because I am not at the same level as the rest of my peers, we make sure that it is an entry point for every student to get in. And we train the teachers on that so that I am walking away with the same expectation as my classmates.
One of the other things I will add that the team didn't talk about, like, they could probably talk about what they have in their curriculum documents for like a full day. I mean, it's so much richness there. But they also teach the teachers how to use data days and they have data days built into their curriculum where teachers can stop, look at the data, make adjustments. So oftentimes you might walk into a mathematics classroom and see, some students might be on a digital platform. Some students might be sitting with the teacher, just like in a reading, you, you naturally think about that in reading, reading language arts, where we run small groups. But mathematics also works with the teachers the same way because they really want them to use data and pull students into, you know, where they are, really going back in areas where they have to give additional work, scaffold, warmups, homework assignments, different ways to go back and hit standards where um students miss. And that's one of the reasons why in their curriculum, their standards will scaffold a lot. So they'll keep coming back around. Because unfortunately, they have so many standards that they have to hit that they're continually teaching. And so they have to always have a pulse on the data to know where, where students are sliding, either, you know, uh Michelle talked about it, like the student that's advanced versus a student that might need additional accommodation. It's the biggest reason why we can't write a one size curriculum fits all. But why we have to really train teachers on what data do you use to assess your kids along the way? And she talked about, or the team talked about those formative, the formative assessments are all the times. We try to get them to do those all the time because you need to know who got it, who didn't. And how do you make an adjustment on that and keep teaching and pulling that student back in along the way?
This was very helpful. And this is the kind of information that I would suggest that you continue to share with the parents and the public. Because yes, we know that you guys are great planners and we know we have great teachers. But we also know that our students are at different levels of learning. So this was helpful for me. I appreciate it. And I hope you encourage parents uh to look at this, maybe through their PTAs or however. But this was informative. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Actually, we're presenting to parents this week um at through, with the Office of Family Engagement. Um I believe on Tuesday, Janana?
Actually, it was last Thursday.
Oh, it was last week. It was last week.
Yep, mhm. And it was a, it was a really good session and we had the opportunity to um share with parents the differences. We talked a lot about what we did in math classes and how that looks a little different. Um I think parents sometimes refer to it as the new math. And then we just shared all the resources and materials that we have available for parents so that they can see what's happening in those classrooms. And I told every, I, I, I made everyone do a math problem. I just told everyone, we're all math people. We all can do this. And then just encourage your students that they are also math people. And we, we're just going to work through this together. It's about the process. And then, like we said before, it's not about answer getting, it's that process and that thinking and that collaboration. So we did have that opportunity last week to talk to some parents, which was really good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I apologize. I had a glitch. And in the midst of the glitch, would you know that's when you end the presentation, right? But I just, any other, I, I see a board member surround freeze. You have a question?
Yeah. So firstly, I wanted to say thank you for the presentation. Um I loved all the information that was shared. I especially love the part uh when Dr. Dyson mentioned the intentionality. Uh because that was something I was noticing, you know, was with the assessments, you know, they all were framed to look alike, to prepare students. And I was like, no, the, there was a plan behind this, you know? This is intentional, you know? They're planning for this. And I truly appreciate to see that um this work is really being done to prepare students. And so firstly, when it comes to the seeds and um just a curriculum that's shared with teachers, I'm just curious, uh when do teachers typically um get that material?
So I can share, share with you, we usually try to have our first um quarter units, first unit of instruction ready for teachers who want to plan over the summer. So our goal is to be able to have it available for teachers mid July, definitely by the first of August. Cause we, we have teachers that like to plan throughout the summer. So we make sure they have access to the curriculum um during the summer before they even come back.
Okay. No, and I asked. No, thank you. And I asked because um I think we, one of our emphasis this year has really been on mental health and mental health for our students. But I also think, you know, the mental health of our teachers is important as well. And during the school year, once we're already in the school year, they're grading, they're preparing for the next day and all that. And so when it comes to like framing how their formative assessments will look to match the seeds that were given, you know, tying that all like once already in the school year, it could be maybe a lot. Um so definitely was just curious if they're given that time before. And then I know you mentioned a parent session last week. Um was that session recorded by any chance? So it can be put on the website? Um because I, I mean, I'd love for parents to have that access to the information.
Yes, we did record the session last week.
Okay, and so?
Um those uh family, I always get the departments confused with the engage, family engagement office. They had the recording and they're going to post it on their, on their website.
Okay. I hope so. I'll check in. And see where we are at that. Um and then my last question, and I'm sure it's really wrapped up with everything that was shared today. But I know, you know, mathematics is really one of the priorities, top three priorities for this school year, for the school system. Um and I know um principals are really tasked with like leading their schools in terms of those initiatives. And so do we know any of those initiatives that principals may be? Um you know, sharing from their schools to really enhance the mathematics and that involvement in mathematics in their schools.
So I'll jump in there. So um our, that falls on, well, not that it falls on the other side of the house because we absolutely collaborate. Matter of fact, this team along um with our area partners are all out doing learning walks. What I was going to say is our school side though, has instructional directors and our associates in there in buildings all the time. And part of the conversation is continuing around what's the culture in the building? What's everyone talking about in terms of mathematics? What does the classroom look like as they're doing informal observations? We've had an opportunity to partner with them and I've even tasked my team, especially Dr. McLeod, went out with several of our CNI, Percy and our partners as well um this year to go into every Algebra One classroom in the month of October. The reason we did that is we test in Algebra One. So we wanted to have a pulse of what it looks like. We're disaggregating that data now. What will then happen in an example like that is um in some instances, we were actually in schools with our school partners. And so they had a chance to see that work with us as well. We also invited our ESOL team. We invited our special education partners, Title One, um our accountability partners to go with us. So we'll start looking at where teachers are. We want to see where teachers are right now in terms of pacing. In February, mid January, because we want to give people a chance to come back. And then in uh through mid uh February, we will start that cycle again, just where are our teachers? What adjustments do we need to make? Who's so far off pacing that we have to figure out how to help? Another thing just to remember is that we have still vacancies in, in the area of mathematics and that's critical. And I just never want to skirt over that. Um our team works with schools to put plans in place. Our schools have done a tremendous job to pair teachers. We have teachers teaching concurrently to other students to try to fill those voids. But it is still a real um situation. So I just wanted to, to bring note that our, our school partners definitely have a pulse on it. And the collaboration we have between both sides has really been tremendous in, in terms of how are we all keeping pace of the language and how are we all keeping a pulse on the work?
All righty. Thank you so much. That's it for me, Dr. Miller.
And if I, I just want, want to add one more thing to the first question you asked. Our math team actually creates a lot of the formative assessments. So that's one of the things that our teachers don't have to always try to build out on their own. When, when you hear them talk about milestones or you hear them talking about common assessment tests, like we build it. If a teacher follows our curriculum, everything they need except for building it around the child in front of them is already at their disposal.
So I too want to echo, you know, this math curriculum is extremely rich in terms of how you intentionally organized and prepared students to be ready for the MCAT and to be ready to be lifelong learners. Maybe you can call me a geek, but as I was looking at the assessments, I was so excited because I was like, oh my God. You know, just, you know, just following the alignment of the formative assessments that you have and the NCAP and the uh if they're able to master it at the formative side, clearly they're going to have it when they take the actual M, MCAT. And you saw that in elementary, you saw that in middle, and you saw that in high. I think what, what made me even more excited is when I saw the different questions and how you were able to articulate to us the difference between a content question that, and a reasoning question. And then the misconception we have about modeling. And I think that, you know, um having those parent sessions, I think, you know, for those of us who are brought up in math the old way, understanding the difference between a math model and a modeling question will be something that comes with time. So I appreciate the fact that you really take the time to educate the parents um on this concept of on this concept of modeling, a math model versus the questions that they get on the assessments. So I have two questions. One is really, oh, let me go back to also Dr. White and team. How, I appreciate the fact that you really honed into your curriculum versus the textbook. I think there's, that was an important point to really bring out, that your curriculum is what drives the work. And the textbook is an, is an additional instructional support, so that it's not reading the textbook from page to page. Your team has intentionally looked at what is expected of students to be college and career ready, and not the exam, college and career ready, and really put it in place to where now they're looking at math not from the perspective of numbers, they're looking at math as a means to life. So I really appreciate you stressing the difference between your curriculum and how the instructional materials are used. So as we come into budget season, one of the things that we have to do is turn in our budget priorities. So I want to just, you talked a lot about, not a lot, but you really stress the professional development that goes into for the teachers and really being able to unpack the curriculum and implement what we have the written curriculum to the actual taught curriculum, right? So speak to us about what you would need, and if you, you want to wait and think about it, but what you would need for us to emphasize in the budget so that you have the proper supports as you implement the curriculum?
But I will ask my team to, to answer that. I don't know if they can answer on the down. They probably want to huddle. And so if we could give them that opportunity, and then I can cycle back as an action item to share areas that they may feel that they need support.
I appreciate that. And if, if you're saying, okay, we're good with what we have, great. But this is a great time for us to really look at if there are additional supports that you need, we can start advocating for those.
Okay, so I'll, I'll work with Dr. McDaniel on that. So before I turn it over to our accountability team, because we want to then, you know, you've heard Dr. Strater talk a lot about grades. And we think that's relevant. And, you know, one of the things I'll say, and hopefully now this presentation kind of makes sense, when, when we have individuals that may indicate or ask questions about a benchmark. If you notice on one of their slides, they talked about a benchmark is no more than really 12 questions. So we'll never take a benchmark and say that we have a whole grade level of students who aren't successful based on a 12-question test that's actually intended and designed to go back and instruct. And it's, it's built at the highest level of the standard that we can hit. And so that is why we constantly say it is an instructional tool. It is not a tool designed to say our students don't learn. One of the biggest ways we have in our district to talk about are our students' learning, is to look at our grades. And you will be able to tell through the data that you'll see tonight that there were times in the pandemics where kids were failing, right, in their grades? So that's to let you know that stu, them teachers aren't just giving out grades. So grades is what, you know, you heard Dr. McLeod talk about. Even on MCAP, they give students, they might not have the right answer, but they give them credit for reasoning. Part of the classroom opportunity for students is to learn how to reason, is to learn mathematics. And to say anything else is a false narrative that our students aren't learning. Do we have room to grow? Absolutely. But I want the next team to come up to kind of show you where we are at this moment in time in terms of our math grades for quarter one, and to kind of take a look at that and where we've come from of grades. And I think that will round out our presentation to tell you a little bit more holistic where we are with mathematics. So with that, I have the pleasure of turning over the presentation to Dr. Bowers and Dr. Whittington.
Thank you. Good evening, board members. I'm going to share my screen. Tonight, Anthony and I are going to be sharing with you a distribution of math and science grades. And we're going to walk through, we had started this work two years ago when we were looking at the implications of the COVID pandemic. And we were looking at specific grade levels for, for different reasons, and we'll talk about that in a couple of slides. And just tracking those grade levels over time to see how the grade distribution has, you know, had some ebbs and flows during our COVID pandemic. And then we also created for you a table that is going to have all of the grade levels ranging from grade two to 12 of the A, B, C, D, and E's for this past year. So I'm going to share, first of all, our rationale. So we have put together a view of letter grades for four different transitional grade levels. And we, we call those transitional grade levels for a reason, because those are the ones we really want to pinpoint looking at a trend or a pattern over time. And we selected those grade levels to represent a sample of the overall student population within Prince George's County. And then each of our slides that we're going to show you this evening show the grade distribution for both the mathematics content and the science content for those transitional grades. So we picked grade five and grade eight, first of all, because those are two key transition years from elementary to middle school and middle school to high school. And we want to keep very close track of those students as they are transitioning to not only a new school, but a new grade band. And so those are key grades to keep track of, looking at how elementary content transitions to middle and how middle content transitions into high school content. We also take ninth grade students for a couple of different reasons. So first of all, as part of our state accountability measures, we monitor students in ninth grade for being on track and looking at passing the four core content courses as well as a world language course. So that is one of the things that the state asks each district to monitor each year is our ninth grade cohort and as well as ninth grade promotion for being on track for graduation. And so that ninth grade year is one of the most important years that we look at because we are looking at those students who are transitioning through high school and hoping that those ninth grade cohorts that are first-time ninth graders make it within four years to 12th grade to be graduates. And then the last grade that we're looking at is our 10th grade students. We specifically picked those students because those are our students who are now part of the Maryland Blueprint designated as college and career readiness. And so we're looking at the key areas of reading and mathematics, specifically pertaining to our state assessments. And those students are now being tracked in those two assessments in reading and math to, as to whether or not they are college and ready by the end of 10th grade. And students in 10th grade are also taking our other graduation assessments in science and high school government. And so 10th grade is also a very key year in high school to look at those measures. So the slides kind of introduce to you a three-year trend, which we started back just before COVID. And we'll go through, Anthony and I'll speak to those graphs. And so the, the graphs are in three-year bar graph trends to highlight the pattern of the grades that are distributed across those three years. And so with that, I'm going to go ahead and look at the first. And I'll let Anthony, I'll, I'll forward the slides and I'll let Anthony kind of speak to you. And then we'll both speak to some, just some things to point out to you as you're looking at the trends for these three years for these grade levels.
Terrific. Thank you, Jamie, for sharing a great introduction. And mathematics team outstanding job as well. And good evening to all the board members. Anthony Whittington, Monitoring and Accountability Director. Now, looking at this three-year trend, just so everyone understands, the, the blue represents the A percentages of the students that received an A for grade five mathematics, all the way through to green representing B, et cetera, down to the Bs and the Es. So what I wanted to take a quick snapshot of the percentage, I wanted to just focus on the Bs and the Es. Because we look at Es as failing and B is in jeopardy of failing. So let's say pre-COVID, which is the SY20 school year, COVID kind of came on around March of 2020. And it looks as though we have 13% of the students receiving a D or E. And SY21 represented online instruction completely. And you see how the number has increased significantly from students that received the D and E. From the 13% that I mentioned earlier, now to 29% of our fifth graders receiving a D or E, which is twice as many. But as you see, when we received our students back to brick and mortar, as we call it, 11% received a D for SY22 and 4%, which represents 15% of our population receiving a D or E, which is coming back to our trend of the normal pattern of what we kind of see within our school district on a regular basis. If you go to science, we're seeing similar trends related to science as well. Whereas SY20, we had only 5% of our students were receiving Bs and Es. But in the midst of COVID, SY21, 25% of our students were receiving a D or an E. But then back to SY22, 8% were receiving a D or E. So it shows that our direct instruction or students face-to-face engaged with our teachers pays dividends as opposed to all of our students being at home, being service academic. We can move to eighth grade, eighth grade, kind of see some of the similar trends that we, that we referenced in fifth grade. With eighth grade mathematics, 20% of the students receiving a D or E in SY20, 37% of the students receiving a DAE in 21, SY21. And in SY22, the year we just finished, 26% of the students receiving a D or an E. Science, similarly, SY20, 14% receiving a D or E, 31% in SY21. And in SY22, 19% of our students received a D or E. Now, when we get to ninth grade, this is the place where students start bearing threats. And COVID played a major impact in our high school instruction, especially in ninth grade. So if I can point your eyes to the N-count or the numbers of students, look at the numbers of students in SY20 and look at the numbers of students in SY22. You see, we have over 2,000 more students sitting in ninth grade than we had previously. The reason is our ninth grade promotion rate was the lowest of record in SY21 or during the year of significant COVID. Therefore, we had a number of students that were retained due to not meeting their criteria for promotions. So it increased our ninth grade population to 13,000 students. So in looking at the distribution of grades, you notice in SY20, we had 37% of our students that had received a D or E in a mathematics course. Then up to 49%, almost 50% or one out of two of our students failed a mathematics course that were classified as ninth graders during our COVID year. And then SY22, 46%. So this is a key point or definitely an area that we're still working towards improving. I can say that the ninth grade promotion rate for SY21 was 62%. In SY22, it moved back to 70%. But historically, Prince George's County normally has a 78% to 79% ninth grade promotion rate. So there is work to be done in the area of ninth grade promotion, and we're working diligently to accomplish that task. Jamie, you want to pick up with ninth grade science?
Sure. You see a similar trend throughout ninth grade, I would just say in general. And in a month, we'll also share the reading and social studies grade distribution slides with the committee as well. But something, you know, Anthony picked up on is the increase in enrollment for our ninth grade. And you can see in 10th grade, we had a different, we had a decline in number of students. So if you look at SY21 to SY22, for SY21, you're looking at those students who were first-time ninth graders in the year prior and did not pass all of the four core contents or the world language course, and then became repeat ninth graders. Or, you know, typically, your, your students might move on to 10th grade and may need to repeat a course. But we had a lot of ninth graders that needed to repeat ninth grade as a whole. And so you can see those numbers demonstrated in those N-counts. But again, the same kind of trend that we're looking at from, you know, almost 30% of our students during the COVID year where we were 100% virtual, not meeting standards in the, in the classroom, going back to, which is a very positive sign. And that's why we wanted to show you these graphs, because they're very visual in the sense that you can see pre-COVID, during COVID. And I wouldn't say last year was post-COVID, but it was emerging from COVID. But you can see that our district is actually going back to our more positive trends of less students who are failing core content courses. So we definitely wanted to show you that visual, because I think it's a good visual to focus on. And then there's our last slide with our 10th grade. And the other point I wanted to mention is our fifth and eighth grade. Another reason why we picked those two grades is because our fifth and our eighth grade students also take our state a science assessment. And then our eighth graders also now, as of last year, take our state social studies assessment. And so grade five, eight, nine, and 10 are very important years when looking at our state assessments. And so that's another reason why we, you know, try to keep track of those four grades due to, you know, predictability of how students are going to do on those state assessments at the end of a course or at the end of a school year. So the last slide we want to show you is just talking about an overall table that we created for you that looks at grades two through 12 and the math and science grade distribution of those grades for last school year. But we also wanted to draw your attention to why we did not include pre-kindergarten, kindergarten, first grade in that table. And that's because those three grade levels in our district use a different grading scale. And they don't use a traditional letter grade A, B, C, D, or E scale. And we copied the language right from the administrative procedure that talks about how our pre-kindergarten teachers and our kindergarten and first grade teachers assign grades or standards-based grades to our students in those three grade levels. So I'm going to escape, and then I'm going to bring up, this is the table, and I'm going to pull this up a little bit for you to see. This is the table that we attached for you at the end of the presentation, and this goes over each grade level. And you'll see we color-coded math as blue and science as green in each of the slides. And we wanted to show you a distribution from school year 22, which was last school year. All of the students, our English language learning students, our students with disabilities, and then all of our race and ethnicity groups of students. We wanted to show you, number one, a total count of the number of students that were enrolled in each of those grade levels by student group and service group. And then we wanted to show you the percentage of letter grades of A, B, C, D, and E for each of those grade levels. And you'll see that we have a individual sheet for each grade level from grade two all the way to grade 12. And then in a month, when we come back and share with you the Language Arts and Social Studies, we'll have a similar document that looks like this, and it'll be color-coded yellow and red for Language Arts and Social Studies, just so you can see the distribution from last year of our students. And just so you get a better percentage by looking at different student service groups, how they fared in each of the math and science contents for letter grades. So I'm going to stop sharing and open it up for any questions that you may have for Anthony and myself.
Any questions?
Thank you. And I was going to comment on the previous presentation as well. But I, I think the question for me is about, again, accountability to, to our staff and, and how a lot of what we're teaching and putting forward impacts their retention, their promotion, their Impacts their retention, their promotion, their development, how we're. Supporting them with recommendations on how to get better. And so can you talk a little about your work and how it informs. Professional development throughout the district? So I muted when I was talking out.
Now, I'm gonna let the math supervisors talk about professional development and then Jamie, once one of them responds. Can you also talk about professional development that we offer in terms of understanding other data sources?
We definitely look at our assessment data, our formative interim. And our summative assessment data to determine where our teachers' needs are. And then we've had the opportunity this school year to partner with some of our. Our outside sources, National Training Network, for example. I think Dr. Dyson talked about her training today. We're also having a training for our elementary school teachers. With the different. I was going to say new math like other people say it, but the different strategies that we're using now to support conceptual understanding of different concepts for students. Realizing that. Our teachers weren't taught that way, so they need that support of how to get the content across. So that our students have access to that grade level content and just supporting them. And then just using that data. From our formative interim and our summative assessments to see. If students are struggling in a certain domain. What can we do to ensure that our teachers are are presenting it? In a way that's effective and impactful for our student.
Can I, can I just add one piece? I think where you're going or the question you're asking is one critical component of. Our math program has been around side by side in the classroom coaching. So when we find a teacher who needs some additional support with instructional practice, things of that nature. We used to have that. We don't have, no, we no longer have that. Because of our coaches have been sent back to the classroom. However, the way that we try to address some of those. Concerns is by offering office hours by when we go on learning walks, when we see teachers. Struggling, we try to think of ways that we can get and provide them support with our instructional lead teachers. And as another source of support for them. We also put together because in the evenings, that's the only time we can have that those trainings. We try to ensure that we have self-paced professional development opportunities for teachers. We provide updates where we put, okay, hey, it's time for grading. Make sure you remember it's this percentage for each one of the categories. Here are some activities that you can do. So we try to. Provide as many opportunities and communications, communicate with teachers in various ways. To ensure that we are addressing some of their needs.
I think my second comment is in line with the first presentation, which is the idea that. Working with students and educators that are. Comments, our. What we say to them is not punitive, at least as it starts. And so I talk about this in my class. As we said, it's assessments nationally and this idea that. High stakes testing of assessments as sort of a. A gatekeeper, which creates all the anxiety and fear, all the things that result in. Some cases low test score just because of the anxiety of taking a test versus. How about we use this assessment not as a grade? Not that something's going to, you know, impact you whether you play sports or whether you graduate, but to help you. And you you sort of walk in with that thinking. I'm really here to give you almost like a physical exam. And we go to physical exam and you're like, okay, I'm here, tell me what's wrong so I could fix it. And so I just hope we can continue to sort of frame assessments that way. Both for our students and for our staff so that it's not. Again, a high stakes punitive process. That gives folks anxiety that results in sort of, you know, friction between student and teacher. Or staff member and supervisor, but that, you know, in the end, we're trying to meet the mission of the district. And in doing so, we want to be very clear about what you need. And to get you what you need as soon as you can get it. Like there's no need to delay, you're getting what you need so you could hide. Issues that we all have. And so. That's just my point, something I've seen both communication, but also as a parent. That I think we need to continue to address.
And I love that you say that, Michelle, and I'll let you jump back in. Especially when we talk about those benchmarks, right? And we say many of our exams like that, they're not even allowed to put in their grade, but it's not for a grade. And, you know, as a system, because we're so large and because we have teachers coming in and out, we can definitely. Continue to communicate that. And that's why I push back sometimes when I'm in board meetings to say, we can't sell a false narrative. We can't say on one side. That our whole, our whole district is failing and then not want kids to walk into a classroom. Being excited to learn for something that we use for instructional purposes. So know from our side, we'll definitely find more ways. To communicate to our teachers to just be in front of our students, giving the best and for them to communicate to our students and to our parents. That many of these assessments are just what you described as a way for us to help to build your. Just your love of math. We want students loving mathematics because it's everywhere around us, right? And regardless of where you are, we want you. To to feel comfortable taking risk. The risk might not always be the right answer, but the risk is going to put you on a path. To really reason your way through and to get better. So I really appreciate that and we'll continue to find ways. And Dr. Dyson, I apologize.
The the only thing I was going to add, if we all can continue using this, these two words. That we push and push and it's descriptive. Feedback. If we give teachers, the data should give them feedback on their next. Instruction decision and feedback should be given to students on how to improve. So that's our push. Push everyone, if we all using those words, descriptive feedback, how are we giving students feedback? How are we sharing feedback with parents on strategies that you can use to support your students? So that that has to be our, the heart of our work is all around feedback. And I think it will address what you're speaking of. So kids won't fear assessments. They'll see them as checkpoints. Okay, now, okay, now that I've done this assessment. Put it back in front of me. And one of the things we use in mathematics is if you don't, you don't check it, they won't respect it. Meaning if you don't put it back in front of kids, then they they just go on to move on to the next thing. So we have to make sure we're giving students. Feedback when they're doing these assessments.
Can I, that's one last question as it relates to how, so there are instances when we're going to, you know, students need to get graded into the semester. I mean, so we're going to get to that point. Eventually, and we're going to use assessments, we're going to use classroom, we're going to use. Potentially exit tickets and things like that. Do we have a consistent? Framework for percentages that teachers should be using. As relates to what the overall score is. I just am seeing some some parents posting about some inconsistency about sort of, you know. A child's grade, how much is testing, how much is homework, how much is, you know, you know, exit tickets? And how much of particularly on the testing. My parent mentioned that forty percent of her child's grade was on two assessments. And, you know, for, you know, a high school, that is a lot to recover from. But can you talk a little about just how we go about instructing teachers on how much percentage and? In some cases, how over the course of a child's life? The percentage of exams as it relates to their grade goes up.
So we do have administrative procedures and in that administrative procedure are grading policies. For grading factors for every single content and course, more so built around content. A lot of our courses are forty percent assessment, but then now I'll let my team talk about what's assessment. Because and when this is a conversation, when they talk about doing professional development that we talk to our teachers about, because their assessments are not always. A paper and pencil, just students trying to work their way through. So if Michelle, Stephanie, or Janita, can you talk through a little bit about what falls into that category?
And I'm glad you said that. So when we provide the teachers with. The breakdown of the percentage of scores. So I mean, a percentage for each particular category, whether it's independent assignments. Classwork or if it's assessment, under each category, we provide teachers with. What could, what constitutes or falls under the assessment category? And so under that category, you will see projects. You may see discussion opportunities. So when kids are in school, they're using the standards for mathematical practice. You may see quizzes, you could see it's cooperative discussion, cooperative work. So it's not always a common assessment or it's not always a paper and pencil. It's making sure that we give students multiple opportunities to be successful. So when you see that a grade for only two grades fall under forty percent. That is a conversation that we are, you have to have with the teacher to ensure and we are putting the message out there. Working with teachers and working with principals to ensure that the distribution of the grades is equitable. In each one of the categories. It's not perfect, but we have to continue to push and provide them support with understanding. How to do those things because the teachers are doing them, but how, but how do. They're they're engaged in discussions, but how do we now look at the mathematical practices and give kids grades for that and kids understand? From a rubric, what it looks like.
And Board Member Valentine, last year was the first year where we actually went in and said if a course. In one, because one of three areas are the factors. Assessments and quizzes, that's one, classwork and the independent assignment. But we indicated if a if a if a factor has a certain percentage. There is a minimum number of grades a teacher should have because we we identified. And we're finding areas where assessments are fifty percent, forty percent of your grade and you have two. Assignments in there, students don't do well, forty or fifty percent of the grade is bombed. So we put in. In the administrative procedure and at the beginning of each year, we did a video around administrative procedure for grading and we. Provided the presentation, we recorded the video actually and we made it as a part of our first week back for all teachers to watch that. Because we want to make sure that they are giving our students a chance and our administrative procedure talks about on any assessment that. A student is has not done well, has an opportunity to come back to the teacher and ask for an additional opportunity. And, you know, I even had children in college. I think we should be in a business where we want to know if kids learn. Not penalizing kids because they didn't do well on an assessment and it's a one time and done. If you have any child wanting to come back and say, can I have another chance? Then I'm excited about that because. That means they're willing to go try to learn, they're willing to try to study, they want to get their grade better and we should be excited about that and give them that opportunity. So we also have that in our administrative procedure as well.
And this actually, I mean, fifty-one, twenty-one for high school, it's fifty-one, twenty-one point three. To Dr. White's point. That is the whole thing around the MCAP rubric and that is why I made a point of saying, sharing that in the rubric, students are graded. Or get scores for their thinking, even though there may be some errors. From time to time and in our trainings, we are training our teachers to. Do the same thing on assessment grade to make sure that they are giving students opportunities to get scores for their thinking. Versus whether or not the answer is right or wrong. And I know for some people that may be a culture shift, but. At the end of the day, that is, that is where we're headed with this and that is where that. Where we want our students to be comfortable enough that. Even though I may not be right, let's talk about, I want to talk about what I know and then. Give me an opportunity to move forward and then, you know, progress to the right answer or or a problem solving strategy. That can get me to the right answer. And I wanted to also add, the last thing is, Dr. White mentioned earlier. About us going on the the world tour is what I've been calling it, when we went to all the mathematics classrooms and. I want to speak on behalf of the student population. Based on the buildings that I've been in, our students are ready to learn. Our students are in class. They are showing up. So it is our job as the adult to make sure that they are getting what they're showing up for. And I have been to half of the, how many is it? Thirty, twenty, or whatever. I've been to over half of those schools. And in at least four classrooms in every building. And it is the same north, south, east, and west. Our students are there and they are ready to learn. So I, and that is in mathematics. And I can only speak to mathematics. So I don't, I am frustrated if our students are still continuing to get a bad rap. Because it, that is not the case. They're there and they're ready to learn and I just want to go on record for saying that.
I just want, before we move on, I have one. So Dr. White. Kindly invited us to join her team in doing learning walks this year. And being, you know, part of the Department of Testing Research and a lot of times we kind of. Are just that, just the testing department. But I think it's important for our department to get out into schools as well. So I've gotten to go on some learning walks and. I concur with Dr. McLeod that our students are ready to learn. All of the high school and middle school math classrooms I have been in. Students are there, they're ready, they're engaged, they want, they want the instruction. And we also by us going into classrooms gives us more of an insight of the professional development that our office. Needs to offer in working with Michelle and Stephanie. And Janita and how we help prepare our teachers for all the data that we're getting. And how do we have those collaborative conversations with teachers? But also how do we have collaborative dialogues with teachers and students? So we want to focus on in those data-driven practice days, teachers being able to discuss about their data. And students being able to talk to each other about their data and their challenges and what they need. The things that they're getting from this assessment and how they can, you know, help support their own learning.
Board Member Judy McInnes-Murray.
Thank you. I'm very happy that you, that the system has shared this data with us today. And I hope that this data will be in a prominent place. So that the community and other board members will know this is where we are. This is where we are today. But I also appreciate the enthusiasm that this team seems to have. About the confidence, not only in our teachers, but also in our students. And it's about the way we communicate with them. So one of the things I noticed and I think my colleague, Dr. Zafora Miller, mentioned this. We're at the start of trying to decide what to put in budgets. One of the things that I saw in the surveys from the parents across this county. Was that support in the classroom. Every, every page that I saw. From every, whether it was the north, south, central, Prince George's County, that was a common thing. So when I see a thing like that, I'm saying to myself. How do we help teachers get this in a classroom? How do we help principals get this in a building? The the additional staff administrative support. And with the with the knowing where we are with the data. How do we get assistance for students? In each building down to a classroom? Do we, do we tap into high school students to come in and tutor our kids? Do we tap into the community and partner with businesses and in other organizations? We realize that teachers are responsible, but we also know. Teachers can't do everything in the climate we're in when we can't get enough teachers in those classrooms. So we need to think outside the box. You need to think outside the box now. You need to let us know, board members, like Dr. Zafora Miller said, what do you need? And be definitive in that and don't be shy. I mean, if it's not being done today, we may create it. So think about it. And tell us what that is. Because we are ready. I think all board members are ready. To help you guys get what you need, have teachers to get what they need and definitely to help children. Have a better quality of life in every classroom. So what are those things that we need to help you to get to make that happen? So that's my soapbox, Dr. Zafora Miller. But thank you guys. I appreciated all of this. Now I'm as excited as Dr. Miller.
Jump back in because, again, we we had two board members put Dr. White on the spot about budgets. And I've been on the board long enough. You are not going to get anybody on this call, talk about no budgets. They have a process. If anybody on this call talks about some budgets, they're going to get a phone call from South Africa. About what they said on this call. So I guess I've been here long enough. What I do know is there are other ways to get revenue to support the district that go outside of the budget process, which they have their process, we got our process and so I think we respect both of them. At the same time. There are partnerships and there are way of the board can be helpful outside of the budget process. Let me just sort of take it outside of that. And if the opportunity to help you all brainstorm to find alternative revenue sources to to Dr. Dr. McInnes-Murray, I gave you a doctor now. And so this idea of how we can work with community partners and other ways to supplement. And support and to use our social capital. Um, and support and to use our social capital. Particularly people like brothers like uh uh brother Severon Ruiz and others, high achieving students. Who could be, would be helpful maybe in elementary school, who need service learning hours. I mean, all those different things that we kind of throw everything up there. But I think there could be an opportunity for us to have a process of just sort of. Of thinking through, you know, how we can 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 add on more than just what we get financially from the state and the county. But to foundations um and other uh revenue sources. So again, I will take you all off the hot seat as relates to. What y'all need, because I've never gotten answered, I'll tell you, I'm not yet. There are, there there have been ways that I have been helpful that I think I I that go beyond the budget process and I think all of us as board members want to be helpful.
And I think one of the things that could really help us from every board member right now is we pay for tutoring. Um, it's a twenty four seven tutoring service, it is in all languages. So as our students are home and parents are saying, my student doesn't understand, my student is struggling. We have an avenue that they could call every single day to work with a tutor um in a session. The other thing I would like to advertise, especially in the area of mathematics for our middle and high schools. Is that we pay Carnegie, um, we have a huge grant and a lot, what we're finding is many of the 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 tutoring. Um, avenues that we have and we pay a lot of money for, um, our students aren't taking advantage of it. Carnegie is top tier, when when people want to know ratings, they top tier, they, we can't get a better rating than what we have for them. And we are, our middle school, if you look at our data in the past two years, we've struggled, we struggle and it gets students to come in. So. You know, if you can help us brainstorm ways around that and and as you are out talking and having your, your copies and your chats and meeting with your constituents. Let them know that we have both of those resources that could truly, truly um help. And then um in the areas of um. Additional platforms and elementary, they have dream boxes, they can be on all the time. I believe Michelle and and Stephanie both have platforms. So. We'll kind of work up some things um for you all that is is talking points that maybe you could use to share when you're out and about. If a parent says, my child struggled, did you know we had tutoring? So then we can just all speak the same language and. And I will take back, I will go talk to my team though, and if there's something else, I will take it through the proper channels and send it back up and. But we will think about outside of the box, like what are some other ways that we could could really seek support? And we're very thankful for everything that you all do to support us.
Well, I'll add one other thing, though, just because you bring us something uh in the name of a budget. It just gives us a collective opportunity to look at what that need is. And we can help you brainstorm how to get it addressed outside the budget. Right now, we don't have any information. We need the information, that's all I'm asking for. And it's one thing that I know after being on that legislative call with the blueprint today. With the legislators, we have some opportunities now. Don't shy away from that. You have those opportunities now, you may not have them in the future. So now is the time to build our foundation, to give our students what we need. So all I'm saying is seize it, just seize this moment. And my experience over thirty years. In the federal government is one thing that I know, when change is on the horizon. Use that moment to bring about the change you need. That's it, thank you.
Can I, can I just, can I just rephrase the question? Who's that? I'm sorry, good, I want to ask, I just want to phrase the question. Um, and this is something you can now, you all can answer offline and it sort of gets to your point, but does sort of keep us all in line with the processes. And your question would be, uh, what has worked over the last year based on what we invested in the district? Like, what, what, what has worked the most? Um, and what has not worked the most? I mean, and that's not, that's not a sort of a. You know, a sort of casting any aspersions on particular process, some things just don't, it might not work here. Um, and and they may have worked somewhere else. I mean, I I do work outside of the state in the district. And understand that something just work in other places, be beginning on the environment and the timing and and other supplemental resources that came along with it, that's fine. But a question I I think we we could have for those who are. Working on the budget process to the administration is what has worked over the last year and two years that we invested in and what has not worked so well and how? And then that can guide. Um, the thinking, but it does take some people off the hook.
I think Dr. Tyson might agree that. The, and and um. And uh Janita would agree as well, that though. Pro- professional development followed by the one to one coaching has worked well for mathematics. Because professional development is great. But I don't always realize that in my classroom with my students. So then that coach follows up with me and shows me how I can bring that to a reality in my room. And that has worked well, um, that model has worked well for us. And we do as, as we do still have a partnership with a couple of companies, but it does not capture as many teachers. As um, when we had our own coaches, I'm just being honest and. You know, we lost our coaches because of the teacher shortage, but that is the model that was working for us.
Yes, so we've tried to supplement that because we know the classroom comes first. So absolutely, we were, you know, on board with our CEO and supporting. You know, our coaches going back. But we're excited as they're, they're, they're finding teachers and they're trinkling back in and we are. Excited about it because I I agree with Stephanie that we know that that model works um and we we can specialize our coaches around things. So that's why we tried to take some of the funds from um Esser and to partner with organizations that can help. Um, provide coaches for us. So, you know, we had to think out of the box, okay, if we don't have that staff of coaches at elementary, middle or high. How can we partner and still have this staff available that if a teacher, you know, needs support? So. Um, Dr. McDaniel, I I wrote those questions down so we can come back to the table and and talk as a group and then and communicate that.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And thank you for rephrasing uh Board Member Valentine, because it's really important, you know, as I was asking for me was um. In looking at things that you say, if I had, if I had more of this, now granted. We may not be able to get the funding other than what is already allocated, but just as you mentioned. PD followed by coaching is a model that works and that has financial implications, right? So if you want to spread it across the county, as we're looking, who knows if we have excess funds, we can say, you know what, the math team needed, you know? And we don't want to have to backtrack and say, well, let's go find out what's happening. So it would be great to have some ideas. Of some processes or practices or um implementation uh. Plans that are working and you say, if we had more of this, I think it would grow. And you already have the door, data to support, to support that. So I'm gonna steer you away from the budget because you went right in the lane I was going to. Uh, Board Member Valentine asked about, you know, the 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 data and the professional development. And you started unpacking it, but I don't know whether you gave enough justice to what you do. So I want you to really unpack the um, you know. The the level at which you have this document, the curriculum document. And how, and and I hesitate for use model because model can be misinterpreted as you can see, but. How you ensure the teachers understand what it looks like and sounds like. Other than just giving them a planning document and what you do with them over time to ensure that, you know. This is what it would look like in a classroom and your intentionality around ensuring that it's not just a document, but you show them. What it really should look like in the um, in practice.
So the first thing I'll say is our Department of um Opal. Professional Leading and Learning, I always have to say, say the letters first. Um, they put together a catalog that 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 lays out professional development, all of our teams have to um. Before every quarter, put in for the professional development that they need. Curriculum and instruction overall um is very rich in professional development. You'll actually hear teachers. Whether they leave, whether other districts seek our teachers, because our teachers come well prepared in professional development. Um, our mathematics team hosts a lot over the last. Three or four years, we've had to move away from professional development opportunities during the school day. Based on um subs and and making sure the classrooms are covered. So. While we offer so many things and I'll let the team kind of break apart, you know, what they do because it's wrapped around instruction, it's wrapped around the building of instruction, it's wrapped around. Um, looking at the data that they receive back, it's looking at understanding the data sets that they are administering. It's understanding the platforms of those data on, it's understanding the interventions that they do. Um, they do so much with our teachers to make sure that they are are firmly based in their curriculum. Um, but it's a lot when a teacher teaches during the day and all of our professional developments are in the evening and on the weekend. And so. You know, while we offer and we have a service, we identify that we're we're not touching them. As much as we would love to and as much as we would have in the past, simply because I'm exhausted. And I, and you know, um. Teachers leave and and a lot of teachers are still taking classes, a lot of teachers have families, a lot of teachers, you know, some of them work other jobs and so. It doesn't stop what we offer, my team offer, also offers office hours during the day. So it teaches that can drop in if like I just have a question, I'm stuck in a curriculum, I don't understand this, how to get from point A to point B, we have office hours. Now know that when we had our coaches with us, those office hours were so rich because we could really hone in on. Fifth grade unit two, doesn't that anybody wants to drop in? And so we kind of had to, you know, disperse that a lot, but we still offer the service. So my, my team is strapped. I mean, they, they are pulled thin, I'm so thankful, I try to tell at every opportunity I can, how how grateful I am for them. Because they have not dropped a piece of work in the midst of, you know, um, having to make adjustments on a dime to put teachers back in classrooms. But team, I don't know if I covered the magnitude of the things that you do, please jump in and and add any other ways that you provide professional development or how you attack it.
Can I, can I just add one piece? I think this will help you understand how we. Address professional development. And one of the things we've learned is that our principals are instructional leaders. So one of the things we've done this year, which is beautiful, is that, for an example, looking at a modeling rubric. So what does it mean and what types of questions will students be asked on assessments and how does that appear in instruction? And what resources do we support? We start with the principal. Then after we go to the principal, then we have AP training on the same presentation. After the AP, we touch the IOT. After the IOT, then we offer those sessions for teachers. So it's it's ensuring that all four stakeholders are hearing the same thing. So when we receive our benchmark data, we'll have bring out a session for principals, for APs. Math leaders and then we'll have a session for teachers. And that way, we are all saying the same thing. So if we don't have the coaches in the building. At least our uh principals are being equipped to ask the right questions about it. So I'm looking now at your data and I noticed that you don't have any scores for your type two and type three questions, how can I support you? Or why do we have this? So we're just giving them those tools to support it. So professional development is just not for teachers. But we're putting those strategies and professional development opportunities for um principals, APs, IOTs, um math leaders in the building. Um, and it's, it is beautiful to hear the different conversations that's happening, especially from the principals' lens. Um, because now they, we we stand in front of them every month, we have a stand in meetings. With them where they come to training and we take them through this work. And then not only do we take them through the work, we give them, here's your, here's your questions to ask. Here's your toolkit. So if you don't know, you don't see it, this is where you go in. We call them out cheat sheets, but this is where you go in the curriculum, if a teacher is struggling, you pull up that curriculum, you go to this page here, you say, hey. How can I support with you with this? Have you looked at this particular tool? So that's how we're a- attacking professional development, but ensuring we're not just. Limiting it to teachers, but we're touching different stakeholders so that we all are speaking the same language. I think I, and I think that's what you were looking for.
And that's great, Michelle, because Dr. Coley makes sure on the, at the school leadership side that. Um, the associate superintendents have level alike meetings and they provide the space for us, the level alike meetings, even so that the instructional directors, the associates. All of us are speaking the same language.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for sharing that because I think it's important for everyone to know that. You're building not just the capacity of the teachers, but you're building the capacity of the leaders in the building. So that they're able to monitor instruction in a way that they have already been taught or um. And so there's alignment between what the the administrator is coaching the teacher with and what you're teaching the teacher. So thank you, thank you for sharing that. So um, any other questions? I know it is seven twenty. Okay, so um, if there are no other questions, we are going to start adjourning. Because I want to be respectful of your time and I'm sorry we went a little bit over, a lot over time. Um, it was a great conversation. So follow ups from the October seventeenth, twenty twenty two meeting uh will be posted on Bo- Board Docs. And with that, I'd like to thank the public, I would like to thank my colleagues and most importantly, I would like to ta- thank. Dr. White and your team and administration for joining us and just engaging us in this rich, rich conversation. And we're looking for more to come. So um, that said, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Yay.
So. That's right, yay. So thank you, everyone.
Oh, we last inside joke, but yeah, I said yay, but I don't really say yay, but I say it because someone told me I had to say yay.
That said, everybody have a great evening.